I want to welcome everyone to our board meeting tonight, especially those who are here tonight in person and to those who are watching via the internet. We thank you for your interest in our school system and we appreciate your support. At this time, we're at item number six, seven, excuse me, on our agenda, which is recognitions. And so I'll call on Dr. Ratliff and Ms. Hyatt.
Some gentleman I am. Lost it. So tonight, we have a lot of special recognitions. Thank you, student leaders, for coming out. And I know you've got a lot going on. Spring has sprung and all kinds of things are getting ready to happen, including, how many days do we have left, ladies? Three and a half, something like that. Yeah, four. We're not going to count though. You're not going to count the whole day, are you? So tonight, we have a lot of special recognitions. It looks like we have a scant turnout. And so what we might do is just recognize those who are here and then if we need to, we'll probably end up going to the school and recognizing those who can't be here. So for the sake of time, are they coming in the house? Good. Okay, first, I'd like to start off with our ladies softball awards. And I'll start with Ally Stiegall. Ally, if you'll come forward. Ally has been named everything this year. I gave her a hard time. It's like, can I just say, you've done everything. So but this one particularly is for being named the 2A Rocky River All Conference for varsity softball. So congratulations, Ally. We won't make you stay too long. There's only three. Also, for being named 2A Rocky River All Conference Honorable Mention for softball is Brooklyn Miles. Brooklyn. Congratulations. And I won't forget you, Gretchen. Also, being named 2A Rocky River All Conference Honorable Mention for varsity softball, Gretchen Henry. Congratulations. Little photo op. Thank you, ladies. Congratulations. Soccer. I'll just give it a shot. Okay, sorry, the overtalk here. You can hear all my sidebar conversations. Tonight also, and I'm not seeing everyone, but just in case, and we can always give them a round of applause from a distance, being named 2A Rocky River All Conference Honorable Mention for women's soccer is Elasia Caraway. Let's give her a hand. In the same vein, being named with the same award for Honorable Mention for women's soccer is Michaela Mason. So let's let her, congratulations. Next up is the men's track program, being named Rocky River, 2A Rocky River All Conference Honorable Mention for track and for placing 10th overall in the DISCIS and the state championship is Justin Medline. Being named Rocky River All Conference Honorable Mention for track, for men's track, is Dallas Lilly. This guy does not play. Yeah, serious athlete. Congratulations. You'll stay put, Dallas. I appreciate it. But also, this is, we have four men who were the eighth overall in the state championship with a time of 43.51. I think I can do the 10-yard dash in 43 seconds, which is a season record. Is that right? That's what I understand. I'm making sure I'm looking at the right people to get that acknowledgement. But there are four gentlemen, Jaden Allen, Elijah Sellers. Go ahead. I don't go asses, but, ah, yeah, there he is. Yeah, you knew I was going to mess it up anyway. I'll just say Mr. Johnson to you. So there you go. And also Dallas Lilly. So again, congratulations. Will you guys stay put? You'll be the two, so did I give you too many? All right. Oh, well, I'll take this one there. All right, picture time. Yes, please, yeah. Thanks, Coach. If you'll stand here with him and get the picture, I'll get out of your way. So I don't know about the thorn between the roses there, but that'll work. Congratulations, man. Some of those folks, Coach, had a busy night at Athletic Bank, didn't they? This is a women's track, and I think we have some of our folks here. So I'll do the best I can. Being named 2A Rocky River All Conference for track and for placing 7th overall in the long jump at the state championship is Janiah Maxwell. Congratulations. She was busy the other night, too, so giving out a lot of awards. You coach everything, I've learned. Didn't, yeah. Okay, also being named 2A Rocky River All Conference for track and for placing 8th overall in the triple jump at the state championship is Trinity Sellers. Coach, you are going to be decorated, Coach, tonight. So, yeah. Not that you weren't already. Being named 2A Rocky River All Conference for track is Essence Davis. Congratulations, Essence. Proud of you. You'll stay here with Coach. In the same, being named Rocky River All Conference for track is Kaia Davis. Also, our Honorable Mention Track, 2A Rocky River All Conference, is Angel Kason. Being named 2A Rocky River All Conference Honorable Mention for track, for women's track, is also Zalaya Lloyd. I knew, Ms. Hyatt has to train me. I have to, I need to. Oh, this is great. So we have some of our winners up here for this as well. So we have some people who can just fly in this county. The women's outdoor 4x200-meter relay track team, finishing 8th overall at the state championship with a time of 147.7, which is also a season record. And I'll name all of you, and then I'll give you your certificates. Angel Kason. Essence Davis. Zalaya Wall. Did I get it? Why, you just told me that, you know? And Janiah Maxwell. So, Coach, I'm going to let you distribute first. All right, so if you'll stay put for pictures, we would like to congratulate everyone tonight. Good job, ladies. All right, we're going to do this. We, I think we have lack of attendance, but we want to, there's always reasons for this that they're not here. But let's, let's honor them as an Anson family for their accomplishments, even though they can't be here. We'd like to, tonight, for earning the title of 2A Rocky River Conference Golf Tournament Champion, Koi Lear. Also being named Rocky River All Conference for varsity baseball, Jackson Burr. I'm going to get him because I told him to be here. Being named 2A Rocky River All Conference Honorable Mention for varsity baseball, Isaiah Hatcher. And we also had one more honoree. I know, Mr. Stinson, you're really proud of all these guys. But being named 2A Rocky River All Conference Honorable Mention for varsity baseball as well as Jared Horn. And I think that's all, but I really, here's what happens that I think is very special for people. So those of you who earned awards, stay seated, big kids, the adults, let's give them a standing ovation tonight, if you would. Everybody deserves a standing ovation. I know it's embarrassing. You'll just post at me later, but, but that everybody deserves a standing ovation. So congratulations to everybody tonight.
On behalf of the board, we're proud of our students and their achievements and their accomplishments, and we appreciate your being here as we honor them tonight. And also say that I know some of you may have to leave, and you would hate to leave such a vibration vibrant meeting, but if you need to go now, it's the best time. Thank you for coming tonight. The Anson County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open for members of the public to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about matters of public concern, the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the educational programs or school facilities, and/or other matters. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. This part of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest, concern from the public, however, obscene or vulgar statements, personal attacks, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. We did not have anyone to sign up for public comment tonight. So at this time, we go to item number nine, the chair's report. At this time, I'd like for Dr. Roseborough to stand up. We understand that you're leaving us. We want to thank you for your time in Anson County and the work that you did for us, and we want to wish you the best in your new endeavors. Thank you, Dr. Roseborough. Do any of my colleagues need to ask any questions regarding the new school construction? Hearing none, do any have any questions appropriate for open session? Hearing none, I'm through with the chair's report and call on Dr. Ratliff for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, very brief tonight, middle school project, just, I know there weren't questions, but just wanted to give you quick highlights. And there'll be a meeting on Wednesday. We'll actually find out a little more. I was hoping we would have additional information above and beyond what I'm giving you tonight. But I want to let you know that the power into the school by the end of this week should be totally powered up, which is exciting. They were trenching last week. Were able to catch some days to get that done with the trench and lay into the lines. So we were very excited about that. We will not be able to do anything without that. So, big deal. And roofing material, all roofing materials are now onsite, and that's always a waiting game. And we were very happy starting on the gym this week, actually may have started today. We also finished the first coat, finished coat and painting in all the rooms, so they're starting to look like classrooms. We went in last week in the mud and got in there, and there was, it was really kind of neat to see everything coming to, to some fruition there. Also, both the classroom wings and the administrative wings, all windows have been placed there. So if you have been there a while, it looks a lot different when you get windows in. It looks like a home. And, and then most of the brick on both of the classroom wings and the admin wing has been done, completed. The cafe wing is something we've been waiting on, and the three, about 75% of the roof trusses are in and up. So we are really going to be close to getting dried in in the entire facility. So I say that with excitement, but understanding that we still have a lot of work to do. But that's a big deal to get it dried in, as you all know. So I just wanted to give you that update. May I go on? The student learning? Okay, student learning piece, just, there's a lot going on. We're not going to get into a whole lot tonight. We are starting to, with EOGs, we'll start to see preliminary results soon. It'll be a while before we can talk about those, but it will help us make some decisions as we go forward and certainly make decisions about participation in summer program. Some of the staffing requirements have been shared, and it's out there for staffing for summer school has been done. We are calling our experience the Summer Learning Experience for June, and we have all of those, almost all of those hires. We still have some more hires to go, but we are really getting close to getting everyone squared away. I know it's hard to shut down the school year and then start another one up. We talked this morning in our leadership meeting briefly about the fact that the summer program is not just an extension, it's almost like starting another whole new school and the school year up again. And that's the mindset that we want to have, because our children deserve that fresh opportunity, new perspective, new opportunities for them to be successful and experience great accomplishment. So whether it's enrichment or credit recovery or whatever might be going in their summer learning experience, kudos, kudos, kudos to the CIA team that has put this together and everyone else. I know, Mr. Ross, you're, you're hanging in there. He's having to finish up and do all the rocking and rolling here at the end of the year and then try to provide, do provision, make provisions for transportation for the summer learning experience, as well as child nutrition program and many others that I won't mention, just everybody coming on board, because it's like setting up shop again. And so we're very excited about that. One item for tonight, and Dr. Roseborough, we can pull this over for you if you would like. Would you like that? So, Dr. McClure, Mr. Flake, I know we don't pay you enough to do this, probably, but if you might. Since I won't, and I won't feel quite as guilty about not participating and helping with that. Thank you, Mr. Flake and Ms. Hyatt. So tonight, we have a special presentation for our AIG program. So our executive director for curriculum instruction assessment, Dr. Roseborough, is here tonight, and she has some colleagues and other family members to, to be along for support and help as well in that communication. So if you'll lend your head and hearts toward AIG. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, Chairman Truman and board members. Delighted to be before you this evening. It's bittersweet, but we'll try to get through this presentation. I hope that you enjoyed it for your reading pleasure. It's 57 pages long, so we're not going to go through all of that this evening. It's going to be a brief summary, but I want to thank Mary Tyson, as well as Catherine Barbie, for making sure that our plan was tight and right and that it's going to be timely submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction by the July deadline. And so, as you know, we have worked very hard on making sure that the plan was inclusive of stakeholders, as well as folks that have worked internally within the district but may not have had an opportunity to serve on this committee before. So this is a three-year plan. It goes from '25 to year '28, and it is made up of committee members within the district, as well as parents, as well as employees that work in the district, but may also be AIG parents. And then we also received some additional information from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction that was advising us on our plan. Thank you. They're going to click for me this evening. We established a new mission and vision for AIG in Anson County schools using the new parameters set forth by the Department of Public Instruction. And we utilized our State Board of Education policies to develop this new mission and vision. Our new vision is to cultivate a learning community of high-achieving gifted learners to reach their full potential and contribute meaningfully to a global society. The mission is to provide rigorous, differentiated, engaging learning experiences that are aligned with the North Carolina standards and extend beyond the regular curriculum, fostering the unique intellectual and creative talents of academically and intellectually gifted students in Anson County schools. Currently, our AIG demographics are that we have 73 students who are academically gifted in reading. We have 84 students that are academically gifted in math. We have 118 that are dual-certified in reading and math. We have intellectually gifted students at 2, and we have academically and intellectually gifted at 0 currently in the district. We have some other numbers available to board members. I imagine you may ask us some additional questions, but we did pull some additional numbers for you all. The standards that are currently being utilized for academically gifted programs across the state are standard one with student identification, two, our comprehensive programming within the total school community, standard three, differentiated curriculum and instruction, standard four, personnel and professional development, standard five deals with partnerships, and standard six deals with accountability. I will put this disclaimer out there, sometimes that with our academically gifted students, we often pay attention to all of our other data points, except for our data points dealing with our special populations of students. This being one of those groups that we must start to pay close attention to in terms of their proficiency and their growth within the school district, especially with the number of students that we have that are gifted in Anson County schools. Our standard one procedure for AIG identification is we do a universal screening process. Our district currently uses the INVIEW assessment, which is a normed reference test for our students. It's more comprehensive than some of the other assessments that are used across the state, but currently in our region, some of the districts surrounding us also use INVIEW. We do a data collection protocol, looking at the data of our AIG students throughout the year or potential AIG students. We do a comprehensive learner profile on those students using multiple indicators, such as their achievement scores, aptitude scores, qualitative data, and classroom-based performance tasks, portfolios, and talent development. Referral processes that we have in place currently are year-round referrals from parents. Parents do have the opportunity to refer their children to gifted services for us to examine their performance using those multiple indicators that I just referenced. Referral packets are provided to staff for the recommendation, and AIG staff confer with parents upon receiving complete documentation. Currently, our criteria relates to academically gifted. We look at the three out of the five areas, one of them being the 90th percentile on the aptitude achievement test. For our intellectually gifted students, we look at the 97th percentile. And we also utilize portfolios, rubrics, in addition to how our students are performing daily in the classroom. So it's not just performance on the aptitude test. We also want to examine what are they doing daily in the classroom. Our committee looked at the information of, in terms of grading, which we should be looking for, and the committee determined that an 85B or above would be used, using our report card data, if we were receiving nominations for students that may be performing at a high level, but it's not showing up on those norm reference tests. And we also are working in collaboration in terms of identification of those students who are twice exceptional. That means that they may be serving as, they may be identified as AG as well as EC for exceptional children and multilingual learners, and using those multiple measures to identify those students. We also have what we call a nurture program for our K2 students, students that may be showing up against their peers of being high achieving, using that information not only for IQ tests, but also parents may want a psychologist, or the district may want a psychologist to review those students that may qualify for nurturing services, and any transfer student reviews documentations. Previous districts determine eligibility based off of local criteria. For standard two in our services and programming, our differentiated education plans, very similar to our individualized education plans for EC, are used to determine whether or not, what type of personalized learning paths our students should be on in AIG services. We currently cluster students who are being served as academically gifted. That means that when we're scheduling those students, we try to make sure that like-minded students are placed together in the classroom. It also makes it easier for them to receive their academically gifted services from our AIG staff. Middle school also offers clustering. They do push-in or push-out services. Our secondary AIG teacher is Ms. Diggs Lindsay at the middle school. And for high school, we consider those students that may be placed in honors, AP, CCP, which is our career and college readiness program for our students that may be on that college pathway. So they take that CCP course and CTE pathways with a counselor, as well as a college or career coach that helps us with the alignment of that. And also, it's important that MTSS students are also seen as part of the tiered system of support, needing intervention supports as well. We may refer to that oftentimes as enrichment, and what we discovered as part of our services and programming here in the district when we were looking at this particular process and this particular standard is that we were top-heavy on the enrichment services. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in terms of the curriculum. We have intentional grouping processes in place. We like to ensure that there's continuity between grades K-12 and that we're offering those acceleration options, and our early graduation pathway will be part of that acceleration piece for those students. Standard three. For standard three with our curriculum and instruction, we do follow the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. It should be an extension of what's happening in the general classroom. And so that's an area that we decided was a high area of priority, because our data suggests that we may not have that complete alignment with our standard course of study. So that's an area that we want to improve upon. It's one of the highest priorities during our self-assessment that we identified, and that we need to use our data to drive the instruction for our academically gifted students. We already talked about the high school differentiation piece, but our core curriculum practices that we have in place will extend the curriculum for our students. The enrichment and the extension activities are already built into the core curriculum, which is invisions, our CKLA, which is our English Language Arts, STEM Scopes is our science curriculum, and then we have IXL and Second Steps. Second Steps is what we'll be utilizing to measure the social and emotional development of our students, which is very important for our AIG learners. Also, connecting them to real-world connections and partnering within the district and with teachers on understanding the portrait of a graduate characteristics at the North Carolina DPI, Department of Public Instruction, that supports us in making sure our students have those durable skills, and then collaborating again with other specialized staff, such as those that are twice exceptional, exceptional children, and our multilingual learners. On the next slide, you will see our new continuum graphic that shows the importance of all three pieces of academically gifted student, as well as our standard course of study, with the standard course of study being in the center, the need for acceleration, extension, and enrichment practices. On standard four, for personnel and professional development, we do have an AIG lead coordinator in our office. That's Ms. Joy Wallace, and she is AIG certified. We do have AIG licensed specialists, and we also have tailored, specific PD opportunities for our teachers, especially now we're targeting our for our teachers, especially now we're targeting our beginning teachers and understanding what it means to have academically gifted students in the classroom. And also, we have some staff that are already dual-certified in the general education area. We're looking to recruit more teachers into this area, offering them the opportunity to go back at the, at the paid expense of the district, but also commit to the district for two years if we do decide that we're gonna move forward, we're paying for their certification. We only have a few staff members in the district that are certified, and our most neediest schools in the districts do not have certified AIG teachers, and so that will help us with growing that population of students. On standard five for partnerships, I think this is an area of strength, and we're gonna continue to develop partnership with our community partners, making sure we have two-way communication with parent guardians in partnership opportunities to help develop our plans more definitively for personalized learning by involving our parents in those transition meetings. AIG parent advisory panel, we had some of those families with us this past week to help us with the development of the plan. We want to continue to meet with those parents at least twice a year. Having accessible information, we're in the process of updating our website to be sure that all information is transparent to the public and to the families that we serve. Community stakeholder partnerships, we outlined some of the partners that we currently interface with the Anson Arts Council Rotary Club, Planetarium, Brown Creek Creamery, Public Library, and other organizations such as 4-H, Holla, Unison, and more, for enrichment, career readiness, and dual enrollment. And our last standard, which is program accountability. Of course, we can't do all of these standards in one year, but we can do a few things well. And so the team will outline the plan and break it up into chunks over the three-year period to be sure that the district is accountable for the AIG programming. It first starts with the written plan, and then monitoring the implementation by utilizing our data analysis each quarter by looking at this particular group of students to ensure that they are making steady progress in terms of proficiency and growth. We also want to monitor the access and participation, making sure that there's, there is access and opportunity for all students using those multiple measures of identification, because we do realize that sometimes giftedness does not always show up just on a nationally-normed test. We also have committed to making sure we're increasing personnel credentials, and we also want to get feedback from our students, parents, and teachers, and stakeholders throughout the year to ensure that we're presenting and also implementing high-quality programming for our gifted students. And we also want to make sure that parents are aware of their rights as gifted parents, of parents of gifted children, in the same vein that we do for our exceptional children. Also, on page six, there's a graphic there of the, of the number of students in the demographics that we have, in terms of who's currently being served in the AIG program in Anson County schools. The total AIG students identified as dual-exceptionality is .36, I believe we just have one, is that correct, Miss Dunn? We currently only have one student that is dual-certified in exceptional children and AIG. So this is a breakdown of our current demographics for the academically gifted program. So tonight, we are seeking approval for the 25-28 AIG plan to ensure timely submission to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction before the July 1, 2025 deadline. Are there any questions?
Hearing none, thank you, Dr. Roseborough, for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you all for the opportunity to serve my hometown as well, it has been a pleasure, top-notch people. I've always said that, you know, we might not have much in Anson County, but one thing we do have is that is decorum, and we know how the natural order of things are supposed to go, so I thank you all so much for your leadership, and also for giving me the opportunity to serve here at home, thank you.
Very well done, thank you.
At this time, the board is gonna have to go back into closed session. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, we did not have an opportunity to discuss some of the things that are on the action items, and so at this time, I'm gonna call for a motion to go into closed session for matters related to personnel pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A6. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, and any discussion. All in favor of returning to closed session, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we are back in closed session. Ms. Wells, I need to see you before you go, and just go ahead and turn that off.
Thank you, team, I appreciate you very much, have a good night.